We've had your back until the pandemic hurt us. And so thankful, the bravery that you presented at this moment.
Thank you, Rose. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment? There are over 150 people on the call, so just want to make sure I'm not skipping anybody.
Kristin DeGray.
Oh, hi, Kristin.
Hi.
You want to identify yourself, please?
Yes, Kristin DeGray. I live in Willamette and I work at North Wyndham School.
We were born and they weren't able to be released until mild.
Whoever's phone is unmuted. Please mute. Thank you. Go ahead, Kristin.
Okay, hi. I just wanted to ask that whatever decisions are made are made as quickly as possible and people are told as quickly as possible. I personally am in a situation where I really kind of need to know what's going on. So I'm hoping that we won't be waiting several more weeks before we find out about actual cuts. The other thing that I wanted to say was that residents, parents, and teachers in this community need to show more activism and need to be more involved with not just the Board of Ed, but with Board of Finance. The time to speak up and speak out and have 200 people show up at a meeting was probably a couple months ago. So I just wanted to make sure that going forward, we are considering that the time to speak up isn't after tough decisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? I know it takes a little time sometimes to get unmuted. Wait a minute, see if anybody else wants to speak. Okay, if nobody else wants to speak during public comment, we're going to move on on the agenda. I want to remind folks that there is time for public comment on the agenda at the end of the meeting and also that the Board of Ed is always open to you all reaching out to us and sharing any thoughts you have with us. So I appreciate 161 people being on the call tonight. And we'll go on to the business at hand. The first item, I mean, the next item on the agenda is approval of the Board of Ed meeting minutes from May 26th. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Katina, seconded by Mark. Any discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote on the minutes.
One moment, I'll share my screen.
You can certainly just call our names if you don't want to share the screen. It's up to you.
Okay. Dr. Caban Owen.
Hi.
Mr. Doyle.
Mark.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Dunick.
She may not have arrived yet.
Dr. Galucci.
Hi.
Dr. Gomez. Ms. Haney.
Hi.
Ms. Lambert.
Might still be muted.
Tracy Lambert.
I hit the unmute. It didn't go "I." I'm sorry.
Ms. Ray.
Hi.
Ms. Eid.
Hi. Thank you. So now we're on to a couple of quick action items. The first item is recommended acceptance of a donation of lawn signs for the 2020 Wyndham High School graduation. And that information was in your board packet. It's a donation from the DeVivo family on behalf of the 146 graduates of the class of 2020. And a lawn sign will be created with the name and portrait of every graduate, so they may be placed in an array on the lawn of the Wyndham High School. And so I'll entertain a motion to accept that gift.
I make a motion to accept the gift.
Elda, seconded by Tracy, maybe? Okay. Made by Elda, seconded by Tracy. Discussion. Tracy, did you have your hand up?
Well, I was just going to make the motion, but I would like to... On behalf of parents, seniors who have been jizzed this year, I would like to thank Tom and his family very gratefully for the sign. I have seen a mock-up of them. They look fabulous. And there's background noise. I'm sorry. I can't help it. And I'm grateful for the recognition this community has been giving our seniors going forward and throughout this pandemic. So it's hard on all of us, and I know Tracy's had some conversations with some students that weren't funny either, but the other Tracy. But it's, you know, it's what we've been dealt, so we've got to make the best of it. And the community is coming together and doing that.
Thank you. I know, I wanted to also add that the signs will be... Each student will be able to take their own sign home with them after the graduation as a keepsake. So that's better than most people get at their graduation, aside from a diploma, I guess. So is there any further discussion on this? Okay, we'll take a vote.
Dr. Caban Owen. Mr. Doyle.
Mark?
Yes.
Thanks.
Has Ms. Dunick joined us? Dr. Galucci.
Hi.
Dr. Gomez. Ms. Haney.
Hi.
Ms. Lambert.
Hi.
Ms. Ray.
Hi.
Ms. Eid.
Hi. Motion passes. Thank you. And the second and last action item we have before we go into discussion about the budget is that the Board of Education approved the exception, the acceptance of a donation of books. And this would be Altrusa. They weren't able to carry out their project because of COVID-19. Therefore, they would like to provide books to students from grades K through 8, which will be distributed through the lunch distribution. So who would like to make that motion? To accept the books.
I make a motion to accept the books.
Thank you, Elda. Second?
Second. Sorry, Tracy.
Was that Paula? Okay, any discussion, aside from the fact that it's a great thing?
Much gratitude.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote then. Thanks.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Hi.
Mr. Doyle.
Mark.
Yes.
Ms. Dunick. Dr. Galucci.
Hi.
Dr. Gomez.
Hi.
Ms. Haney.
Hi.
Ms. Lambert.
Hi.
Ms. Ray.
Hi.
Ms. Eid.
Hi. Thank you. Motion passes. And I hope that we'll make sure we send a thank you to the donator, to the DeVivo family and to Altrusa for those contributions. Thank you. So now we're on to the meatier part of the budget. And I think I would guess the reason why now we have 165 people online to listen to what we're going to talk about tonight. And before I turn it over to Dr. Youngberg, I want to just acknowledge that, you know, we were hoping the Board of Ed made a stand and asked for all the money that we needed to meet the needs of our district when we did our budget. And it was a bold ask. And we really wanted to get that money for everybody and first and foremost for the students in our district. And it was a very difficult process in this time of COVID-19 pandemic to do it virtually and have the decision punted from the voters, which has never been an easy lift for us, to the Board of Finance. And we were, needless to say, crushed by the decision that was made last week and had no warning that we were going to get only 1.3%. I want to acknowledge that this is really hard on the staff and the teachers and the professionals. And, you know, my daughter is a teacher in the district and I have another daughter that works at East Con, and I know what this does to people. I just also want to say that Dr. Youngberg has done an unbelievable job just stepping up and saying, now we have to like move quickly to figure out what the options are. To the point that was made by several of the speakers, well, at least one of the speakers tonight. We don't want to drag this out forever because we need to start moving on how we're going to meet the needs for when our students come back into the classrooms. And we also owe people on staff the dignity of giving them an answer sooner rather than later. But we may not be able to rush into that decision tonight. And I just want to, just, you know, if we don't make a final decision tonight, we could. But if we don't, we're not going to like wait until June 24th, when our next scheduled meeting is to talk about this next. We'll have to schedule some special meetings. And I just want to say that Dr. Youngberg has a, you know, full presentation for us tonight to run us through the options that are on the table, and there may be more. But I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Youngberg. I'd like to get through the presentation and then open it up for discussion. She sent it out to us earlier today, but I'm sure you're going to probably screen share with us now.
I'm going to try. Janet, it looks like I'm disabled for screen sharing.
No, I think only Janet can.
I'm yelling to her. She's outside my office. Janet, can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you. Do you want to send it on to me and I can screen share?
Oh, you can't enable me? There should be a little button you can click that allows.
You can enable her to share, hopefully. And I want to acknowledge Janet Testa for being our tech person tonight. She's pinch hitting for our usual tech person Brendan, who is recovering from surgery, and we wish him well.
That Brendan's not overpaid.
You're welcome.
All right, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you all for being here. This is quite an audience. So my presentation objectives are to get through this in a very transparent, compassionate, and data-driven way. I have shared this presentation with three of the four impacted bargaining units, and I had a phone conversation with the fourth. This is not an easy, this is not an easy message to deliver to anyone. And Neil and I worked really hard at putting it together and trying to help folks understand where we are. I'm going to do a little historical, go a little backwards first, and then move us forward because I want to make sure everyone understands the problem that we're having right now is not a new problem. And if we don't do something to fix it, we're going to end up in the same exact position next year. I have some ideas how to make that not happen, but we definitely have to make some decisions.
Excuse me, Dr. Youngberg, could whoever's on 377-1063, please mute your line. We can hear you talking.
Sorry. I am muted.
No, you aren't. Did you press star six?
All set. All right.
Go ahead, Tracy. Go ahead.
This slide should look familiar to folks. This was in a few of our presentations to the Board of Finance, as well as to the public at our budget forums. This is just to remind everyone that the taxpayers pay about a third of the cost, maybe a little more than a third of the cost of education. The state kicks in the educational cost-sharing funds, and then you'll see the section for the taxpayers. I just want to remind folks of that. As much as I know from seeing your tax bills that people who live in town, the tax rate's pretty high in Wyndham. I agree with that statement. That I want to make sure people understand that the taxpayers are not footing the bill on all of the requests for the Board of Ed. We have a huge grant portion that's there, and ECS funds come because we have a school system. That's why the town gets the funds. Just showing you here is the last six years of requested budgets, as well as approved budget. You will see that we often do not get what we ask. It's a pattern. It's not new. I don't think it's going to change. I don't think we're suddenly going to come to the table and receive, you know, a large offering. So I want to start making decisions that put us in a position where we're not devastated when we don't get what we're asking for. Because you can see, I'll just try to put it all in perspective. The 1.3% increase is $623,000, $623,689. That is not even enough money to pay the contractual obligations on the WFT, the teacher's contract. It's not even enough money to pay them. We have seven other bargaining units, and we have non-affiliated employees. And of course, we have district expenses, which everyone knows expenses go up every year. That's what happens. So the budget we received is quite devastating, but I think I can get us in a position where we're not dependent on, you know, waiting for this horrible news. Because the reality is, from my next screen, we are spending a lot of money. This next screen is all the Alliance districts in the state of Connecticut. And you can see Wyndham is spending $18,212 per pupil. All of the towns that are in red are the Derg-I towns. Wyndham is part of Derg-I. We spend more money than any other district in Derg-I. And you can see that the amounts of money that they're spending. The green stars are all of the districts that spend more than us. Wyndham ranks ninth out of 33 Alliance districts in spending. Now, when you think about that, we know that our salaries aren't necessarily comparable to outside towns. We know we don't have beautiful facilities, with the exception of Barrows. We know we don't have enough technology. We know we don't have enough materials. We know we don't have enough money. And the reason why I think we're struggling is because our staffing structure is not aligned to what we're receiving for budgets. To put it as bluntly as I can, there's too many people in our staffing structure for what we're being provided for budgets. And that's why it says we're spending $18,212 per pupil, and we don't have wonderful things to offer our kiddos. So as horrible as it is to deliver the message about making cuts, I think in terms of the district's health moving forward, we have to seriously consider this because we can't afford to maintain where we are, and we know that we're not getting the budgets to do it. So this is just to recap. Lynn sort of summarized this earlier. Oops, let's go back first. The Board of Ed had requested the 9.7% increase, and that would have allowed us not to have any layoffs. It also would have provided $433,000 for technology, and the $52 million figure is on the screen there. We then learned that we were getting an additional $921,000 in Alliance funds and that we could now use Title IV funds for technology, which is not usually the case. That was a result of COVID-19. We then revised the request to 7.6, which put us in the range of $51,617,000. What we got, instead of that $51 million, was $48,599,744. The 1.3 left us with a $3,018,024 deficit, right? So we have to make up that money somehow. $3 million. Not an easy task. So we have compiled as many places where we believe we can show savings. The first thing on the list is actually going to require the town to allow us to carry over these funds. The next thing on the list is going to require the Board to make a decision because we can potentially change.
You're breaking up. Dr. Youngberg? Okay, okay, start again. Go ahead.
Sorry. So the second thing on the chart is for the Board to discuss about potentially changing our pension fund scenario, and I'll let Rita give you information about that. We then found some opportunities to put the district in a better position for next year. And you can see all the ways we plan on doing that. We made a couple adjustments. Pupil Services was able to renegotiate a contract and reduce a classroom with Camino Alto and work on some reductions for out-of-district tuition. I'm proposing that we eliminate enrichment at the middle school. Again, not something I'm happy about, but we'll still have after-school programming in there. And if we do all of these things and get permissions and the votes that we need to have, we will close that $3 million gap by $1,365,000. And I don't know, Lynn, do you want to, do you want to discuss the pension now, or do you want to come back to it?
Let's see if the Board has any questions on this slide, because there's a lot in there. And there may be some questions that they have rather than going back at the end. Should I open it up to the Board? Anybody have any questions or comments?
And Rita and Neil, feel free to jump in as well.
Yeah.
I think I saw Katina's hand up.
Yes. Katina, go ahead.
Like you said, we are all heartbroken about this. I just hope that it greatly disturbs me to eliminate the enrichment program at Wyndham Middle School. And I would like more clarification on how is that going to impact students and, yeah, the unintended consequences of that.
So absolutely. So the enrichment program is being funded out of the general budget, whereas the after-school program is being funded by grants, which can't be transferred over anywhere else. So while there might be some losses in terms of the activities that are provided, we believe we're still going to be able to provide after-school programming for the middle school kids. We're just not going to be paying for it out of general budget. Does that make sense? It's just the after-school grant doesn't allow us to do the flip-flops, so we're trying to be strategic.
Is there anybody else on the Board who would like to say something?
I have a question.
Go right ahead, Elda.
About the pupil services reduction. Can we afford to do that?
It's saving us money. What do you mean?
No, but she's saying, can we afford to? I think, Elda, you're saying...
Oh, to reduce the classroom.
What's the impact of doing that?
To reduce the classrooms, yes.
Yeah.
So I think Miguel or Suzanne are on the call. I know that they worked really carefully with this. If either of them are on the call, a comment. I'm going through the...
Sorry, I'm here, but I walked away for one second, and of course, I missed a question. Can you repeat it?
The question is, can we, how can we afford to close a classroom at the Camino Alto to save the money that's involved?
Yeah. So what we had to do is look at the number of students who are currently in the program, the ones that we are aware that would be staying for the program next year. The way it looks now is we have one classroom at the elementary level, one classroom at the middle school level, and we had two classrooms at the high school level. It's at the high school level where we will be losing some students, and the other students would remain, and we have enough room to keep one classroom. So we made that decision based on that. We also have a flex of two students, so we can hold eight students in that program in each classroom. But we can add up to two more students if we needed to.
Thank you, Miguel.
I have another question on that line. In addition to the Camino Alto, we're talking about reduction on out-of-district tuition costs. How will that work?
So the reduction there is we make projections based on the number of students that we currently have going to out-of-district placements. When we originally made this projection in February, when we were getting ready for the budget preparations, it was based on the numbers at that time. As you all know, numbers in special education fluctuate a lot, especially when it comes to out-of-district placements. Because at any point in time, a student can come into the district, but they can also leave the district. And so from February till now, we're now in the beginning of June, we looked at those lists very carefully again, and we were mindful of the changes that have happened, not only as a result of kids that are moving, but also as a result of the potential savings, or not potential, but some of the savings that were incurred as a result of the pandemic, which those were minor. But we were able to readjust those numbers and projections into the next year. Now, we were very, I will say that it wasn't like we are not mindful that those numbers can go up. We only reduced it by what we think was an appropriate number. There's still room there for potentially students who may come in next year, for example, or leave. So we always have to be mindful of that. But I think that the 260 is a safe cost savings.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just, I want to celebrate Rita and the finance department and my leadership team because if everyone remembers, the budget this year wasn't passed until December, was it the 3rd? It was very early in December, and we got a 0% increase. And we have been scraping pennies to try to get through this school year. And every single department and school has been impacted by the fact that we got a 0% increase. And then COVID happened shortly thereafter. So some of the savings is a result of us really sort of buckling down and not spending money and also getting some leeway in the ability to carry monies over. That wasn't the case before. So that's why we are where we are right now, why we're able to say that there could potentially be $1.3 million. It won't be like this next year because COVID-19 hopefully will not be. We won't be talking about that. Let's hope. Some of these things are not going to be available to us. But I think we've done a really good job as a team, really taking, being very careful with every single penny that the district has offered. Are there any other questions?
You know, I just want to make sure the Board members ask now about this because this is like 1.3 million of the savings, of the gap that we need to close. And if people have discomfort with any of this, now is the time to chime in.
Mr. Doyle has...
Tracy? See, I can only see, at this point, now that the screen is being shared, I can only see about eight people. So if you need to unmute and speak up.
Mr. Doyle also has a question.
Tracy has her hand up? Okay, go ahead, Tracy Lambert.
At the end of a year, things still come about purchases, sales, things that we need to get for next year, things that we need to do to maintain. Looking at this 1.3 million, do we have any obligations still outstanding that could come and impact this 1.3 million? So I'm actually going to let Rita answer that question because you're right. We haven't closed out the books. She's keeping a careful eye on it, but you're right. It is possible. So Rita, can you jump in?
Yeah, I can jump in. I don't see the potential of where we're taking the funds to be impacted on additional POs. Our year-end procedures are that the requisitions have to be in by today. Today was the deadline for new requisitions, unless it's like facilities emergency. We also have deadlines by the 17th. They have to close out POs. So unless we get invoices that are higher than what's obligated in the encumbrance, and like Tracy said, my staff are... and we're, like Tracy said, my staff are watching this minute, every minute, every day, you know, watching everything close out. So I don't see the potential of it touching these figures.
And may I follow up?
Is that?
Yes, absolutely.
No, that absolutely answers my question. You know, I've been doing this as long as anybody on this board, and, and there have been years where POs haven't closed till August, and then we find out that there are other financial obligations that we either didn't anticipate or, you know, weren't prepared to take care of, and I don't want to say that we're going to roll over two hundred and four thousand dollars and then find out it's only fifty thousand dollars come August, because that's a huge impact. That's another two positions, maybe three, so.
I, I totally agree with you, but Rita's in charge now, the finance department. They're not, she's not letting PO stay open till August, and I can assure you
No, it's not happening.
It's not happening.
It's just, it's what's happened in the past, and I just want to make sure we don't get caught and give out contracts or make plans to have second grades, and then find out that, you know, there's not the funding for it, and run into some of the problems we ran into this fall. The follow-up that I had was, do we have, has there been any conversation or any discussion about rolling that money over with the town or the people on the Board of Finance? And this can go to Tracy or Lynn.
I haven't had any discussions with the town, because I wanted to speak to the Board of Ed first before I, because if you told me you didn't want me to do that, then, so I haven't reached out to the town yet.
This is the first I saw this dollar amount was today. So if the board decides this is the direction we want to go in with this part of it at least, we can go forward like tomorrow morning and talk to folks about this. Okay? Does that answer your question, Tracy Lambert?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Mark Doyle, let me know in the chat that he has a question. Mark?
Okay, can you hear me now, Lynn?
Yes.
Okay. Well, my question was also about that two hundred and four thousand. Specifically, in the past, we can only spend, the money that we don't spend at the end of June goes back to the town, and the money we spend for next year, I'm concerned about the approval process. I don't know, maybe you or Pollack can answer this from the Board of Finance standpoint, whether we're going to be able to get this done just on approval of the Board of Finance or the Town Council, or if the town people are actually going to have to vote to approve spending this money, because it's, right now, it was approved to be spent in this current budget year, but not approved beside the next year's budget year, so I'm concerned about the logistics, how we get that done.
It is a concern, you know, you know, we may, I think all we can do is ask, Mark, you know, the town, and then we'll find out pretty quickly whether or not that's, that's an option or not.
Yeah, I, I, okay, that would be a concern, because what I suggested I made earlier is that we, we pre-spend the money so that we don't worry about that budget, but that would certainly be a key, a key point is to make sure legally, we're able to spend money that has, has or has not been approved by the taxpayers.
Yeah. It could be, so, I mean, I think we need to prepare ourselves that depending on the answer we get, that may not be money that we have to have to cushion our, our gap, I mean, to fill our gap.
We are aware, unfortunately.
Is there anything else that people want to talk about? Do we want to hear a little bit about the pension fund scenario adjustment? Sounds so sexy, but, you know.
So I can hear, I can share the scenarios.
People on the edge of their seats, but Rita, why don't you explain to us? I saw a couple nods. People would like to know what that is.
I'll share the screen, Rita. Give me one sec. I know I have it somewhere.
It was in our, it was in our attachments.
Do you all have a copy? Because I'm, for whatever reason, I'm not seeing it here. Hang on.
Do people have a copy of it on the board? And believe you me, the rest of you probably don't want to see this unless you teach accounting or something of that sort.
Yeah, I have a copy of it.
It, it's, it's like a lot of little numbers.
It's a very confusing chart, yes.
All right, I can share it now. I just found it.
You got it?
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry. All right, so Rita's done a little, at the bottom, she gave you a little summary. Essentially, there's, there's several scenarios the board can choose from. We picked sort of a conservative one, and I'll let her go into detail, but the board can, you know, make a decision from there. Go ahead, Rita.
Okay, so the first column that is highlighted, the update, updated mortality table. What happens every year is they gave us an estimate in February of what our pension contribution would be for next year, but that was based on tables from two thousand eighteen, because they didn't have the two thousand nineteen data audited yet. So they redid the mortality table, which is how long are people going to live? This is the pension, how many women versus how many men, and that sort of thing. So that first column that is highlighted is typically the column that we use, which is a zero percent amortization growth. So that, if we use that column that we typically use, that would only save us twenty-seven thousand dollars, because our contribution would have to be six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. If you go over to the to your right, you'll see the different scenarios, and that, the different scenarios are to amortize the liability over twenty years or twenty-five years. So if you think about your mortgage, paying your mortgage for twenty to twenty-five years, and also the interest rate is projected at one percent, two percent, and three percent. So it's the risk you're taking that the market is going to stay at one percent, or the market's going to stay at two percent. So all of those scenarios are taking risks, obviously, and amortizing the liability that we have for the pension over twenty years or twenty-five years. When discussing with Tracy and Neil, I, I personally am conservative, so we chose the third highlighted column, I believe, that would save us a hundred fifty-one thousand.
And that's what I added to the chart, but the board gets to make the decision where we fall. We just, we're using that figure for the, you know, the sake of trying to figure out how many staffing cuts we need to make.
Right. So do people have any thoughts on that, or questions on that? Okay. Here, here, I'm just going to check in the chat. Nope, I don't see anybody on the board raising their hand, so we'll move on. Thank you for that data, Rita. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So are there any other comments on the, on where we are in the presentation, or shall we move forward? Anybody want to speak up?
Lynn, can I ask a question now that I'm thinking of it?
Sure.
Does Rita and/or Tracy have a recommendation on which of those lines and why?
Go ahead, Rita, you can answer that, because we picked the one Rita picked.
Well, my recommendation, I'm conservative, and I don't think we should, first of all, I don't think we should go with the longest period of amortization. Twenty-five years is a long time, so we're, we're going from a ten-year. If you look at the first highlighted column, we've always amortized over ten years. And I don't think we should jump to twenty-five years and expect a three percent return. I don't think that's going to happen. So that's why I'm, if it, personally, I would recommend the twenty years at two percent, which is still, you know, hoping that the market stays at two percent and amortize over twenty years instead of ten years. I want to add that we, we do need to look at this pension fund, because we fund it a hundred percent, and we're the only district in the state of Connecticut that funds a pension at a hundred percent. Except for the cafeteria. You see in the bottom of the chart, it'll, it'll show you the cafeteria funding, and that will just be starting next year. And that's, as, you know, we will be taking from their fund balance.
So what you're proposing for consideration as we move through this next budget year is if we amortize that fund over a longer period of time,
Right, for ten years.
we can realize that money that, that you've suggested. I just want to make clear, in case anybody's freaking out when they listen to this, does it put anybody who is going to be collecting these pensions at risk in any way by doing that?
We have a very, according to the actuaries, we have a very healthy pension fund, so no, it doesn't put them at risk. I believe the funding ratio, if you, can you see where the funding, it's right like in the middle of the chart? That's the funding ratio, and I don't believe it changes in any scenario.
Just wanted to ask that really more for people who are listening and who may be worried that we're fooling around with a pension and putting them at risk. And so that's why, that's why I asked that. So, okay, so anything else before we move off of this slide on any other objects on, I mean, line items on this slide?
I just want to make sure everyone knows that if we change any of the amounts in the slide, if we reduce any of the amounts in the slide, it would require us to add additional staffing to the cuts, because essentially what I did was come up with ways I thought we could save money, carry money over, you know, with approvals when necessary, and then I deducted that from the deficit we had. So anything that was left over after we did those things is what has to be cut back in staffing. So if we make adjustments, I'll have to make adjustments here as well, so I just want to make sure everyone understands that. So we have a one point six million dollar deficit that has to be made up in staffing. So we worked really hard to try to make decisions that were student-centered, but I'll just be perfectly honest, when you're cutting people out of a school budget, it's not student-centered, right? We're making cuts to a school budget. We worked hard to try to prevent layoffs wherever possible. We worked to try to eliminate duplicate services. So for example, if a school had eight paraprofessionals, four tutors, and three interventionists, we imagine that those positions could still be supporting students and providing that contact with students, servicing students, but we didn't necessarily need to have as many people on the staff, because we have to make up a one point six million dollar deficit. We got feedback from our school and, and department leaders, that whole idea of the team concept, right? I want to make sure that the people who are leading the buildings and departments have some say in what's happening. We used EdSite, which is Connecticut's database, to do a staffing analysis on all of our bargaining units, and Neil can speak to that if he has anything to offer, but the cuts we made kept us in line with what, where we fit. And Neil, do you have something to offer?
Yes, that when we looked at everything, we were very careful to make sure cuts we were making weren't putting us below average in comparison with thorough lines districts. And we are very mindful of that, and we are looking how we stacked up off of similar districts, not say towns like Glastonbury that aren't similar to us, but districts like our Durgai counterparts that you saw in Durg Age, which is like East Tarford, Meriden, and the like. And we tried to use that to give us some context of where relationship-wise, we could potentially make cuts, not wanting to make any cuts.
Right. And we also use some state and national caseload recommendations, which is what we did when we did the initial budget recommended, acting superintendent budget back in February. We also are thinking about next year as well, not just twenty twenty-one, but twenty-one and twenty-two, because we are still, we do still believe we're going to have to consolidate an elementary school to maintain a budget based on what we've been historically getting. And so we were trying to think about cuts that we made now, would they, would they still be the same cuts? I don't know how to say what I'm trying to say, but we, positions we were eliminating would be eliminated the following year. So it wasn't, we weren't taking anything away from the schools that were, that are in place now, and the ones that potentially are going to get, potentially be closed for the following year. And again, one of the things we have uncovered a long time ago, well, December, was that the district is not staffed equitably. There's not a single school that matches another school in terms of the staffing structure, and we're going to fix that, because it's not fair that kids don't have the same staffing structure. One of the things that we really noticed is how poorly staffed our high school is, and I'm going to come back to that, because the high school is going to need teachers. So we're making these cuts, knowing that the high school needs teachers in order to meet their twenty-five credit graduation requirement, and, and to build their pathways that are happening, you know, alongside of the renovation, so it's a whole nother discussion that we have to have. But the, the, these were all the bullets that we used when we were making our decisions, and again, we don't want to have to cut anyone, but we have a one point six million dollar deficit. So from all of this, we then looked at average salaries, average benefit costs, and then we deducted unemployment expenses, and the district pays unemployment. So if you're an employee that makes forty thousand dollars a year, unemployment pays you up to half of that, so we had to subtract twenty thousand dollars from what we might save by eliminating the position. We obviously were looking for places where we could, where we knew there was a vacancy, and we knew that people could slide in, or if we have open positions now, we purposely aren't filling them, so that we're, it's less bodies, less families that are impacted, but we get the savings. So we went through every single position with this in mind, average salary, average benefit, minus unemployment expenses. We have a few other considerations that we haven't, haven't officially had conversations about, but I've mentioned them to the bargaining units that I've talked to. As the Board of Finance directed me, they want me to go back and have a conversation about asking the unions that have settled their contracts if they're willing to give up what was settled in those contracts.
The Board of Finance can't order us to do that.
Right, well, they didn't order us, but they did bring it up multiple times.
They did, but we, but what I'm saying is that that is our decision, not theirs.
Absolutely.
And I've made that very clear to the Board of it, I mean, the Board of Finance.
We also, we built the budget with a two percent increase for the bargaining units that are scheduled to be settled this year, thinking that that would probably be a safe bet. You know, now we have to figure out if we're able to do that. I'm going to be talking to the WFT about duties and wraparound times, because some of the reasons why we've hired some staff is to cover these duties, because we have unsupervised student time, which isn't good for anyone, so we have to talk more about that. We actually went and figured out furlough day, if everyone in the district took a, took a day where they didn't get paid, and I know people say, why would you do that? But it is a consideration. We could save a hundred and eighty thousand dollars if we all took a day without pay. I am also still considering opening up five positions that would be funded under Project Aware. I've been kind of hesitant about that, because we're supposed to be doing, we're supposed to be taking these grants and building them back into the general fund. You're supposed to slowly reduce the grant funding and add them to our general fund, and we have not been able to add anything to our general fund. We can't even pay what's already there. So, but this, if I opened up the Project Aware grant and we're still able to access the funds, which I still waiting for verification, we could potentially save five more positions. And we also are looking at potential retirement incentives, because there may be some people who are interested in retiring that could, again, save a layoff. So we're working on all of these things. None of this stuff on the screen, though, has, has actually officially happened. It's just other considerations. And from all of that, oh, okay.
Any questions on that? From the board?
Lynn, I have a question?
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, well, just a general question on the retirement incentives. I've, I've looked at that many times over the years, and there's always a, a point where you need a a certain number of people to retire in order to make those incentives work. There's a balancing, a tipping point there. So when you look at that, if you look at how many people must accept the incentive in order to make it cost-effective for us? In other words, if you, if we, we have to provide an incentive for them to retire, but if only two people take it, then it ends up costing us more money because of the incentive. We don't generate the savings in salaries. We need, usually we need, I don't, just randomly say five, six, seven people to accept the benefit in order to roll over. It's like compensating for the unemployment tax.
Yeah.
I see Rita or Tracy, which one of you would like to respond?
I was just going to say, you correct, Mark, that, that with an retirement incentive, there will be a minimum required to, to save money. So the, whatever we draw up, or whatever we decide to do, we will have to take that into consideration. Does that answer your question?
Mark, does that answer your question?
Yeah, that, that, that answers my question. That's exactly what I thought. Right, that's fine.
Can you say that, that again, Rita, though? I, I sort of got distracted a little bit.
With a retirement incentive, there will be a minimum requirement to, for us to save money. Mark is totally correct, and typically, when you write up an incentive, it is in the agreement how many have to take that incentive.
Thank you.
All right, the next slide is all of the proposed cuts that we would need to make to close the All right, the next slide is all of the proposed cuts that we would need to make to close the rest of that deficit. I want to just preface that all of the cuts, we don't know who, who it is that's actually losing a job. That's part of what has to happen after we decide this is the route we're going because of the way the bargaining unit hierarchy works, you know, seniority lists. But we went through and looked, you can look, it's a very large screen with lots of really small print. I don't know if you want me to walk through them all in, or if you just want to give people a chance to read?
I, I, we, we got it this afternoon. I don't know whether people have had a chance to read through it.
People watching did not receive it.
What?
Other people watching did not receive it.
I know other people watching did not receive it, but they can't ask questions about it. We can, so I, my, my question is, I don't, do, do the board members want Dr. Youngberg to go through each one of these lines individually?
I would, I would like Dr. Youngberg to read them.
You would like her to read them? Why does, Katina, can I ask her why you want her to read through all of them?
Because it will help our discussion and each, we can ask questions separately and it will inform the rest of the public, even when they cannot ask questions right now.
That's true, okay. So, so we're going to go through line by line.
Okay, so the, the first thing that Neil and I did when we were making these decisions is we tried to make as many cuts from central office as possible, even though central office has been pretty much, has been definitely minimized in the last couple of years. Like I keep telling people, there, just in 2018, there were four people now doing what Neil and I are doing by ourselves. But we started with the Director of School Counseling at Central Office. We did that because at some point in time, the district functioned without a Director of School Counseling. So I know we can do it because we have. We're going to offer a school counselor a stipend to do some of the additional responsibilities. The next position is actually Neil's former position. Again, a central office cut. He is going to maintain the same responsibilities in his new role. So we feel like we're, we're getting the, the duties are going to be maintained there, but he's now the Acting Assistant Superintendent who'll, who'll do those things.
Well, I just, okay, I just want to stop you there. I want to, want to acknowledge this is, to make it very clear to everybody that Dr. Youngberg and, and Neil Weathers have been doing the job of three people between the two of them.
Well, this year is three, last year it was four.
Right, this year it's three.
Yeah.
Okay.
The next position unfortunately is the District Communications Officer Position. I'm definitely going to miss that. But again, it's a central office cut designed to save school-based positions. That's Margaret Chady's position. So you, you all know how much, how much she does to support my office, but we need to make the cut because I want to try to save as many positions in schools as possible. We made the decision and the board was notified that we eliminated the Early Head Start Home Visitors Program. Again, an unfortunate cut that we had to make, but the program is not mandated. And the grant that funds the program didn't cover the employees' benefits. So we were deficit spending on the general budget side. So we couldn't maintain that. Lucky for us, EastCon has, sounds like EastCon has picked it up and those folks are going to have jobs with EastCon or might fit back into the early childhood center. So no loss to the human beings involved. And it sounds like the service is still going to be provided to the community. So that was a win for us. Then we move into the Certified Teachers. We have a TESOL teacher at Barrows and a special ed teacher at Natchog. Again, I don't know who those cuts are, but we made those decisions for those two teachers to be eliminated because their caseloads are very small. They, to the point where they, we can't justify paying a full-time teacher to, to meet those needs. We then have an art vacancy at North Wyndham School. We are going to share an art teacher between Sweeney and Wyndham Center School, meaning that we'll need one less than we currently have because the art teacher who was working at North Wyndham taught 24 classes. And the one that we're going to split between Wyndham Center and Sweeney will teach 25 classes. And those are pretty close, it's an equitable decision. Unfortunately, we're going to eliminate the Talented and Gifted Teacher. Again, it's a, it, it has a little bit to do with caseload, not so much because there are actually kids that are, that have been qualified to receive these services. We're going to provide some online options. We're also going to make sure that this is something that's available to all the elementary schools through a stipend for a teacher leader that's interested in picking up, you know, ways to support those students. We are going to eliminate one reading interventionist at North Wyndham School. That still leaves them with one English and one Spanish-speaking reading interventionist. We are going to eliminate two district coaches. Wow, that was something.
Go ahead.
We're going to eliminate one ELA coach, the one math coach at the district level, and one school-based coach at the high school. We are maintaining the other coaches. Specifically, we're maintaining a district secondary math coach because we continue to struggle with math district-wide, most especially at our middle school, which has now been focused, been labeled the focus school by the State Department of Ed because of math. And it's a, an area that we're not able to keep teachers. We have many new teachers in that, that area. So we'd like to maintain the secondary math coach as well as dual language and sped content specialists. We also are looking to maintain the school coaches in the other buildings other than the high school. I had conversations with my principals about whether or not that, you know, when it comes to making cuts, you had to make tough decisions and they, they asked if we could keep those coaches. Not only do I, not only do I think we can get the coaching model to work, the, one of the things that's really important for folks to realize is Neil and I are now doing all the operations and all of the teaching and learning work in central office. So anytime there needs to be some major curriculum work or some major assessment work or instructional focus, we need access to coaches to help us do that. Because when I was the Assistant Superintendent, I had the coaches and, you know, half the job I have now. And so we need to have access to people that can do this work because we're not going to be able to do it on our own. It's just not going to happen. The next potential cut is this, a school counselor at Wyndham Middle School. We're still trying to check this out. It's, the employee was given an offer, but it's not, someone hasn't officially been hired yet. So we're trying to figure out if we can actually make that cut without being legally bound to anything. So HR is working on that for us, but it is someone that has not started with us yet. Then we move on to the non-certified, the WFEP. We are recommending that we reduce the number of security guards by three. One at Barrows, one at Wyndham Middle and one at Wyndham High School. The high school and Wyndham Middle School will still have two security guards each and Barrows will still have their behavior tutor. We then moving on to the paraprofessionals, where we're eliminating 10 paraprofessional positions, which still leaves many of our schools with a large number of, of paraprofessionals still in place. The 10 positions is actually only six staff members because there are four vacancies built into there. And again, we're looking to make sure that we keep the one-to-one kindergarten pairs and also to ensure that we can support ELA, math, behavior and ESOL. And I think based on the number of people that are staffed in our elementary schools, we're going to be able to still do that. We're doing a restructure with the Speech and Language Assistant. So we'll be reducing the Speech and Language Assistant from the Early Childhood Center. And we're looking to reduce four tutors in the district, two at Barrows, one at Sweeney and one at Natchog. And again, those schools still have other resources, other staff members that can provide services to students. We then move on to the custodians. We are looking to reduce a grounds worker and three custodians. One of them is a retirement and, which we won't fill. And then there's another reduction at the Barrows. And then we're going to take half of a custodian from Sweeney and half from Wyndham Center. That still leaves the bargaining unit with 33 custodial and grounds workers for our, for our eight buildings, well, seven buildings, because, or is it actually, yeah, it's seven buildings. And the potential for it to be six buildings the following year. And then the secretaries union is next. And we are eliminating the central, the central office greeter. We've set up technology here to be able to answer the door from a number of locations. And we're either going to do that and have them answer the door from their desks or we're going to have them rotate through at the front off, at the front desk there. We are also looking to reduce a secretary between Finance and Pupil Services so that the person, this person can swing back between the two departments. We are looking to reduce the Administrative Assistant in the Facilities Department to a halftime person. We think that the, the task that they're, that they're need to do can be reduced by halftime. And we're looking to reduce a secretary at Wyndham High School. Obviously, this is like, you know, delivering the worst news in the world. This, the total chart comes out to 42 and a half positions, which is pretty close to what I was telling the Board of Finance would happen if we got, didn't get what we were asking for. The one thing I can tell you though, it's 42 and a half positions, but I think Neil and I figured out it's, it's 25 layoffs. And if I'm able to open up the Project Aware positions, it could go down to 20 layoffs. And then obviously, if anyone decides to retire or not return to the district, we would build back from there. But I, I feel much better about hearing that 20 people might lose their jobs than 42 and a half. So I don't know if there's any questions.
Hey, I could just cry. This is really a difficult conversation. Thank you for sharing your proposals, your proposal with us. Is there anybody in the board who would like to ask any questions or make any comments? Katina?
So, I mean, I'm like heartbroken and I know how hard and horrible this all is. Hopefully, some of the teachers that, certified teachers and other employees can go into open positions or, or, you know, when people retired. I, I just, I'm speechless. But my question was, was in Neil's position, one of the 29 positions that was not filled up last, this year? I'm, I'm a little confused about that.
Neil's position was talked about, but remember, we didn't, we didn't know if my position and Neil's position were going to be maintained. If you didn't, if the board didn't choose me as the next superintendent, Neil, my contract and Neil's contract put us back into our old job.
Excuse me, Tracy? Ms. Thoman, or Thoman, you're, you're, we can hear what you're saying. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Tracy.
So Neil, my position and Neil's position were originally built into the 2021 budget because we didn't know if we were going to be chosen to move forward. So if, if you didn't choose me as the, as the Acting Superintendent for 2021, then I was going to go back to be the Assistant Superintendent like I was before you asked me to step in. So Neil's position was the same way. It was held open for him and budgeted for him in the event he was going back there. I hope he's not.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
Me.
Go ahead, Elda.
This is very disheartening, it, it really is. I, I feel horrible that we have to do this. I really do, there's nothing else I could say about that. I have a question about this, the school counselor at Wyndham Middle School? How many do they have without that one, without the one that?
That would leave them, that would, that would leave them with two counselors and not the third.
Oh, I see, so.
Not ideal, absolutely not ideal, but they still have two, two counselors.
So how, how do they break up the, they used to have three houses?
Right, so they'll have to, Dr. Ware, if this goes through as one of the cuts, Dr. Ware is going to have to come up with a plan to, to share the counselors across grade levels.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Elda?
No, thank you.
Lynn?
Yes, Paula?
This is Paula. I'm always concerned about losing support positions in the schools. I know, Tracy, you've done an incredible job of figuring out how to fill the gap, the potential gaps. But that's one thing I'm always concerned about. Our teachers do an amazing job, but having those support counselors and coaches really makes such a difference. One question I do have is when we get down to the grounds workers, have we reached out to the town so that they can help us with maintenance of buildings and, and outside work?
So we actually did, I don't know if Dawn's on the call, but Dawn did reach out just like we were asked to do. And Dawn, are you on the call? I can't go through all these.
I'm here.
Okay, and I know Dawn, you can share with the board, but I know you were saying that the, what they were proposing was actually going to cost the Board of Ed even more money than it currently spends, so.
What? Correct, so, so speaking with, and conversations about that, it seemed like the town would benefit more from our maintenance because the town does not have any maintenance workers. So any work that, any big work that they need, any repairs, they would usually call us and, and my maintenance guys will go and help them out. You guys, I also spoke to Public Works about sharing services for them helping us, you know, cut grass. And basically, they're like, we're so busy now, I really, they don't even see them having the time to help us. You know, with the grounds work, I've worked, I've worked in other districts and, you know, districts that are larger than ours and they, they manage. I mean, the head custodians will, you know, have to help with some of the grass cutting and stuff like that. There's other districts that the maintenance cuts the grass. So it'll be different, but it, it's, it's manageable.
Well, bless your soul and theirs.
You know, Paula, I think, I think if we were going to enter into, you know, sharing more with the town, that's a longer discussion and probably one that we can't bank on getting an answer to until maybe next, you know, like the next budget cycle. But right now, we're lucky that we have Dawn and she's willing to be creative with her staff. And her staff is willing to be, to do that, so.
Right. So the next screen here just sort of summarizes all the positions from the screen and shows you that the majority of the cuts are coming out of central office and district-wide positions and not those in schools because we really tried to be cognizant of that. There's really no way to, to take 40, 40-something positions out of the staffing structure and not impact schools. It's impossible. So, but we, we did try to take the biggest hits in central office.
Lynn, may I speak? It's Tracy.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, I, I understand what you're doing here, that, you know, you only have so much pie and you have everybody needing a piece of pie. But I have concerns and I just want to voice them. And, you know, we can all vote to make our decisions about the security guard at the high school, especially with the upstairs in a bit of disarray over the past few years. I don't think that the people up there are not able to do the job, but I just think that up there it is very difficult with two levels and stuff like that to make sure that we're policing all the spaces we need to clean. And teachers can't be teaching and watching the hallways and trying to figure out what the kids are doing out there. I know that the cuts have to happen. I just want to voice a little bit of concern on that security guard at the high school.
So I really, I struggle with the high school in general because they really need to have people added to their staffing structure. We don't have the money to do it. So I was looking for places where we didn't, you know, we thought we could, we could sort of limp through, right? So they have two security guards, I'm taking one away. You know, they could also benefit from having an instructional coach, but we didn't think that they were being utilized as much as they could be. And, and the secretary, the, the high school functioned for a period of time with one less secretary. So again, they'd probably be limping through, but the reality is the high school needs staff added. So, you, you know, I'll take direction from the board because that's the way that the structure works. But I want to know, who, who am I going to give up if it not, if not that one?
I'm not arguing it, Tracy. I don't want you to think that I'm arguing it. I'm just voicing a concern after a lot of time on the Board of Ed, seeing as we add security and take it away, the behaviors, you know, correspond. So I just wanted to voice that. Position, and all of these positions are horrendous, as everybody else has said. And as a board member, we have to think of them as the position, not necessarily the people. Some of us know and know really well who might lose their jobs. I try to keep that to the back of my head when I sit in this seat, but it's really hard to know people are losing their jobs, especially with everything that's been going on. But for the safety of our students, our staff, that's the one, if you were cutting a security guard, you'll feel the same way. Those are the two that I really feel the most concerned about losing a security guard. Thank you.
Lynn, can I, can I, is there, Katina?
Yeah, I'm also, as I'm looking at this, concerned about the North Wyndham Reading Intervention the North Wyndham reading interventionist, having had my life there with at least the biggest of schools.
But they're still left with two reading interventionists. They also have other pairs and tutors in their staffing structure. I know. I would love to leave them all in, like, really.
Thank you.
I know.
Jaime, you have your phone off, off. You're unmuted. Is there something you wanted to say? If not, you should mute yourself because we can hear you. Thanks. Is there anybody else on the board who'd like to ask any questions, make any comments?
Lynn, this is Mary Galucci.
Go right ahead, Mary.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just want to repeat, you know, this is very painful. I don't think that the process was very successful. I'm quite upset about the Board of Finance, which made the decision on their own. And in fact, perhaps those, it should be listed on the pink slips or whatever other kinds of slips we have to send out. And I, I do want to make a comment about, you know, this idea that people need to go and advocate for the budget, because I, I actually don't agree with that. It is a, you know, constitutionally mandated function of a town to have public schools. And, you know, they really have become sort of rallies. And also, we had seventy to eighty-five percent people speaking in favor of the budget that we presented. And, you know, it seems clear to me that that was never, the Board of Finance did not take that seriously. And, you know, I don't think it's right of them to, you know, make people feel that they have to advocate, and, and it really, I have never seen it be successful, but I've seen it become some sort of rally. So I just want to say that we don't, we need to have what we, what is essential to educate students in this district. We aren't, we shouldn't fight the town for that because we are all one, and it's, it's one budget, and it's a responsibility of every town and district in the state. So I, I mean, I'm just kind of, you know, reflecting on a painful moment. And I also like people to look at the charter revision things because they are not making things better, in my opinion. So I, I don't want to take up too much time, but, you know, basically what we saw this year will be in the charter where the Board of Finance really makes the decision after two possible referendums. So I'll just leave it there and just say thank you to Dr. Youngberg, who's done an amazing and heroic job, and, and the staff, and they've all been heroic, and the teachers have been very tolerant and compassionate, and everyone has tried to solve this problem, but it's very hard when the town does not support us.
Thank you, Dr. Galucci. So.
Mark, Mark Doyle has a question.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Lynn. Well, yeah, these cuts are definitely devastating. I'm always worried when we start cutting security in Paris because that seems to be where we actually really need the people working at the level. But I understand that we don't have a lot of choice. My question is really kind of a, outside the box here, what happens if COVERT requires us not to open up in September or we have to go with this drastic, only ten kids on a bus? Are we looking at that possibility for the new year?
So definitely, I've, I've been thinking about it pretty much every day since, I don't know, the middle of May, when it looked like that might be happening. I, I mean, the only thing I can bank on is that they told us we can collect up to 1.4 million dollars in CARESAC money that we're going to be able to throw at the whole transportation issue. I actually started an email to the transportation folks at M&amp;J to start having those conversations, because I need to have a ballpark idea of what they might charge us if we have to have, say, five bus runs for every actual bus. I just, I need to have a ballpark to know what that's going to cost the district. I've given it as much thought as you can give it, knowing that there really isn't any guidelines aside from what we know about summer school. I don't know. I don't know how to answer.
Yeah. Well, the other part is not just the, the cost. If we have to have five runs, that's going to wreck havoc with the scheduling. You said 1.4 million in CARESAC funds. Is that new money that we haven't heard about before?
Well, the Board is.
We talked about that in the budget process.
Right, the Board.
Oh, we did, okay.
About a month ago, the 1.49 million dollars that Wyndham could receive. The one thing that's making me a little nervous about that money, however, is we haven't actually seen the application yet. We got the parameters that you have to use to develop the application, but we haven't actually been able to file for it. So I don't know when it's expected, but we're anxiously awaiting the application.
Okay.
So Mark, Mark, you may, Mark, you may. I don't know who's making all that noise. Thank you. You may remember, or for people who are listening, you may remember that we did become aware of that CARES money, which we, as Dr. Youngberg said, we still need to apply for and get in hand. So, you know, I think that there were some people on the Board of Finance who were saying, oh, you know, want to lower your budget request. And we made a decision as a Board of Ed that we would only lower our budget request by the money that wasn't earmarked toward COVID-19 response. we did, the Board of Finance did say last week, when they voted to give us 1.3%, which I like to call a pittance. I feel like I'm Oliver Twist or something like that, you know, begging for more porridge from the town and the Board of Finance. They did say if we run into unanticipated expenses related to COVID-19 next year, things that are out of our control, that we should come back to them. But that's not going to help us close this gap right now, unfortunately. Mark, do you need to ask anything else, Mark?
Okay, the, the last slide that I have is just sort of summarizing the things that have to happen in 2021, and, and obviously, some of those are related directly to addressing COVID-19. Their, one of the bullets is secure the CARESAC fund. We absolutely are going to need that. We have to make sure every household in Wyndham Public Schools has digital access, and we're actually working on that now, because we've been told in the reopening scenarios that we should not only be able to plan that there could potentially be a virtual component moving forward, but that we might very quickly be asked to close schools again. Like, if we bring all the kids back and there's an outbreak. So we want to be able to have virtual access for all of our kiddos. So that's one of the things we, we're focusing on trying to make happen now. I really do, I, I think I'm going to bring a formal proposal to the Board about consolidating an elementary school, and at the same time, potentially looking at building, not building, but putting children in a dual-language school in one of our current buildings. We have to work with People Services. They already have a plan to reduce the added district tuition costs, which is going to help our budget, and start to plan for an alternative school to reduce the tuition we're currently paying to LEAP. LEAP currently charges us 18,000 per pupil plus special ed costs. We can do it for less here, so we're working on that. We also have to work to ensure that the high school is fully staffed so that they're able to actually offer the 25 credit requirement, their new schedule, and the pathways. And they're also, at the same time, starting to, they're renovating this new project. And so, sort of to carry the things over from 2021 into the next year. If all those things happen, then we would be closing an elementary school, which would be another, approximately a 2.5 million dollar savings. But it would be a savings that would last, you know, for more than just a year, right? It would be a consistent savings. It would require additional staff cuts. But we would also be, at the same time, potentially staffing an alternative school. So it wouldn't be, not everybody would, you know, people would filter into those jobs. And obviously, the ECHO program, start the planning to potentially regionalize or charge tuition for kids to come in and take part in our Wyndham ECHO program. So I'm still looking for every opportunity to generate revenue so that we don't have to go back and, like Mary said, beg to have money to run our schools. So I'm just trying to come at it from a different way. I agree that we're not supposed to be begging, but the reality is that's what's happening. So if we can figure out how to, how to handle it internally, that's what I'd like to do.
So I want to open it up for some discussion among the board. I know this is, this is a long meeting, but it's an important meeting. I want to go back to some of the things that were suggested. Like in the letter from the union, for example, you know, about maximizing resources from other places. The issue is, we don't even know when the legislature is going to go into session for a special session, let alone, are the, you know, are they even going to do that at all? And we have a deficit. I mean, I know that there's a lot of money on the line from the federal government to help with COVID, you know, with, with expense, with expenses. You know, AFT is a big union, very powerful, has a lot of inroads up at the Capitol. I don't know whether AFT can work to help move some mountains up there and get some more resources for the Wyndham schools. We would love that. And as Chair of the Board, I would be happy to work with AFT on that. In the meantime, though, we have this, you know, on one hand, we're being asked to make decisions in a timely way so people can plan. And on the other hand, we're being told, you know, we should consider getting money from other sources. We don't know what those sources are right now. So all we can do is say we could work on that, but we also need to plan as if this is what we have to work with. So I'm not going to, I'm going to stop talking. I'm going to open it up to Board members and see if people have any thoughts about how you think we should be proceeding.
Can I ask a question? Oh, go ahead, Tracy. You go first.
Hi, Katina.
Hi, you go first.
Okay. A couple things. They said that we, if we saw any unforeseen things coming up in the fall, I think we open our schools on the first day and say, look at all these kids that just showed up. We didn't expect them to, because they weren't here in June. So, you know, I mean, that would be reasonable. Something else, I just, I'm not critical. I just want to remind people, including, I think maybe we should have pushed this a little more to the Board of Finance, when we get alliance district funds or extra grants, we move positions into them. The grants inevitably go away in some way, shape, or form. We used to have project opening doors that offered a plethora of AP and ECE classes when that, so did a lot of the opportunities. We've worked hard to bring them back, but with the understaffing at the high school, we're in danger of losing things like that again, that give our children and our students that go on to college, no matter what college, a leg up because they're UConn credits. So it gives them a leg up on some of their other students, and it saves them money on some of their cohort. It saves them money because they don't have to pay for almost their whole freshman year of college. Those, these grants that aren't meant to supplement the local income, to sup. I'm looking for a word.
To, to replace.
Right. They're not looking to replace the local funding. They're supposed to supplement it and allow us to do more with the funds that we have. Every time that we give back to the town, because we got extra grants or state money or federal money, we're doing ourselves and our students a disservice. We're giving our students less every single time. I just want to remind the people out there that it's something we're not unaware of. I've always advocated against putting teaching positions in grants, but sometimes our hands have been tied. At one point, a couple of years ago, the entire English department at the high school was in a grant. I think it was until this fall, Dr. Youngberg. And, and I said, if that grant goes away, do we not teach English? Because then we don't have to worry about any of our students graduating because they can't graduate without English. So those are real concerns that not only the Board, especially the newer people, but the public needs to know is that the funds we're getting from the state aren't meant to replace the local funds. They're meant to push our students farther and give our students the things they need and the extra opportunities. To move that into teaching positions and use it to take care of local funding that we are unable or unwilling to give is a disservice to our district, our students, and it's a little bit false to the people that have given us the grants and the funds. Thank you.
Katina?
Yes. In reference to making, taking a decision, or I don't know the English, making or taking the decision tonight about what's happening, I'm concerned about what Mark, you said before, Mark, that if the town is going to allow us to put those 200,000-plus money back into next year's budget and not return it. So I would like clarification on that before, and I'd rather call a special meeting than, than not, that, not knowing that firsthand right now.
Okay, so noted. Katina, anybody else? On the board, I mean. Or, or Dr. Youngberg and your staff, if there's anything you want to add or say.
I'm, I'm happy to have.
Did you, did you have your hand up, Rita? Okay.
I just want to say that the only reason we would be able to carry over any funds is because we're an alliance district, and there's a statute that states that we can carry over up to 2%. So yes, we do need permission, but that is the only reason we can carry over funds.
Thank you for the clarification. So that would definitely be something we follow up on quickly to see, to see where, where we stand on that.
Yeah, we, we can ask the question tomorrow.
Yeah, the 200,000. Anybody else on the board inclined to make any decisions tonight on this? Or do you want to wait and schedule a special board meeting in the not-too-far future? I know we have a lot of promotion ceremonies and things coming up. It's going to get hard. We may need to squeeze something in because we don't want to wait until June 24th.
No, we don't, because they, people are already anxious to know if they're, you know, who's losing jobs, and I feel their pain, so they need to have the answers.
Mark?
Well, I was going to advocate waiting, not making a decision tonight. I mean, we just, just saw this for the first time today. Is there a deadline that, Dr. Youngberg, you, you think we need to make this decision by? A particular time, rather than a week from now, or two weeks from now, or next day?
Well, I understand you're not wanting to make the decision tonight, but hopefully it can be made in the next few days, because you have to give me the okay, and then we start the process. And if you say you don't want me to go this route, then that could potentially put us back to the drawing board, so. Can we, can we have a meeting a week from today?
Lynn?
Or within a week, or?
What about next Monday?
No, hello, this is Mary.
Mary.
I just, there's, I have, there's a bunch of meetings on Monday. I just want to say, are we, is the decision that we need to make just to, to say, you know, I don't see an alternative at the moment. I mean, barring some sort of funds that come to us, but, but beginning this process, which is to make the transfer or to do the carryover, maybe we should make the decision tonight, because, I mean, I'm not sure what other choice we have.
Okay, so Mary has put on the table the option of taking action tonight on the ideas that were on that slot, you know, that first slide. Was it the, not the first one, but the one that had the list that wasn't related to positions? The one that had the 207 on it and had the, had the pension issue on it and those other savings. Is that what you're suggesting, Mary?
Right, something, I mean, I, I just don't know if we can have, like, every two days, special meetings, but, I mean, I would certainly be available at some point next week, but are we just prolonging something that is inevitable?
I think, I think, Mary, what you're hearing is some people are seeing, have seen this information for the first time today. And even if it may be inevitable, they want to mull it over a little bit. And, you know, since, since we, you know, we may want to discuss some things with other people who aren't on the Board of Ed, too. There may be people who are listening to this who have things they want to say to us in the next couple of days, too. So. So, so Tracy Youngberg suggested next Wednesday.
I, I have a question, Lynn.
Yeah, why me?
Yes, I like, yeah, I have a question for the, Dr. Youngberg. Do you? You just mentioned that if we did not approve it, you would have to go back to the drawing board. My question would be, do you have any idea what the outcome of that drawing board would be?
All I do is have a list, the next list of potential places I would go to make cuts if these weren't the right cuts. There are still cuts. I mean, we, there's no way you can close a $1.6 million deficit without having something similar to this, some variation of that many cuts.
Well, for myself, I like, I don't want to take decisions right now, but maybe we could see the second version of that drawing, you know, coming out of that drawing board. It could probably help. You know, at least we get some ideas or maybe it could change. So if there is another option, or we could kind of merge the two of them. I don't know, I don't know, maybe.
Dr. Gomez, what we did was we considered what would be the next set of cuts if, for example, the town said we couldn't carry over the money. We considered what would be the next set of cuts to close a bigger deficit. So you want to know what those next set of cuts would be? They're gonna be any better than these, but I can-
No, I mean, I think, I think, I think, honey, you know, like, for example, if the, if we can't figure out a way to get this, to recoup the $204,000, you know, that would require more cuts. And if, if one of these other ideas for saving money didn't, like if we decided we weren't gonna do the pension fund scenario, that's 151,000 more. And so Dr. Youngberg and her staff would come to us with, you know, $355,000 more in cuts.
It makes a little difference. Anyway, I just also want to say thank you very much, Dr. Youngberg. I know how hard you and your team has worked in order to solve almost this unsolvable problem. But in any case, I'd like to really wait maybe until next week to-
Okay. Thank you, honey. Katina, you have your hand up.
Yes, uh, in reference to what Mary Galucci, Dr. Galucci just said, and I, I understand. I, I am not opposed to have a motion of transferring all the money on the slides that we are seeing, including the $204,000 with the proviso that the town approves that. But we should start moving on that money tonight because we don't, we can do that. So that will, that, that will, that makes sense to me, that we do transfer that money to reduce the, the deficit as much as we can. And then next, then we have another meeting next week to look about what else is happening.
Okay, well, let me just say, we don't have an action item on the agenda tonight to take action on these things. We could, I mean, technically in a special meeting, you're not supposed to be able to change the agenda. So my suggestion is that if we're gonna have a meeting next Wednesday, for example, we can do all of this next week. I, I don't think it's, you know, what I would ask is folks to, if you have a material problem with moving forward with the potential savings on this slide, the total 1.365 million, speak up now. Otherwise, we're gonna assume we're gonna take action on it next week. And, and the 204,000 is the biggest question mark on here.
Lynn, Dr. Youngberg, um, we had a grievance, it's Tracy Lambert. We had a grievance earlier this year of which we have paid half out and we still have half remaining.
Mm-hmm, right.
Is that built into next year's budget?
Rita, do you want to answer that question?
We're actually trying to find a way to pay it out this year.
Okay.
But I haven't, like I said, there's so many POs and so many open stuff right now. It's gonna take me another, me and my staff another week to be able to see if we can pay out that grievance before June 30th.
So we don't have to put it on the books for next year, but we haven't forgotten about it.
We haven't forgotten.
Well, no, we're obligated to take care of it. I just want to make sure with the transitions that have gone on and everything, that nothing gets overlooked and then all of a sudden we have another big deficit that we didn't anticipate. You have a contingency for if the town won't allow us to roll over the 204,000.
We just have the next list of cuts, yes. Because remember, we were preparing up to 60 cuts based on-
Right, well, I, yeah, I can understand where Katina's coming from because without knowing about that 204,000, I'm a little loath to say, yeah, let's move forward with this and have those big unknowns out there. So maybe next week we have another meeting. The only night we can't do it is, well, the only night I can't do it is Tuesday because it's a scholarship boards night. And I, I'm sure that means something for a couple of the other ladies on here as well. But, um, the only night I can't do it is Tuesday. I'll make myself available any other night. My concern is that when we do meet, that it's gonna be a special meeting. So we have to put things like confined scenario on there as one action item. We have to make sure all of these action items are listed, so we can. And we have to be willing to make a decision on all of them whenever we meet again.
Next week, next week. I'm suggesting we do that all next Wednesday. Any objections to doing this next Wednesday?
No, but I think in the interim, if I can finish, that Dr. Youngberg and Lynn has a conversation with people from the Board of Finance, Jim Rivers, the Town Council, whoever we need to, and see if this is even something that we're willing to entertain. If it's a hard no, then when we come back next Wednesday, hopefully, you know, we know by Monday or something and Dr. Youngberg can send us what her, her second rally of, of cuts would be. But if it's a hard no right from the beginning, but if it's something they'd be willing to entertain, then we make the motion then, knowing that they'd be willing to entertain it.
Absolutely. When it was clear that we weren't going to see these numbers till close to today, I didn't think anybody would be ready to take action, final action on things tonight. And that is why I fashioned the agenda without the action item on. I mean, we could have put it on there, but we didn't, so. Okay, so we're gonna move without hearing it, I mean, unless there's more than any Board members want to say, we'll meet on the 10th on that, on this topic. We still have more items on the agenda, though, so please don't go away. Unless you're tired of listening to us, in which you're, in which case you can, you can leave if you would like. So anything else from the board before we move on? Okay, discussion regarding closeout of the Board of Education 2019-2020 budget. So we're not gonna move forward on anything, just for everybody who's listening, related to next year's budget until next Wednesday. So you have plenty of time to talk to us between now and then. And you also have public comment at the end of this meeting if you want to say something tonight. So who's gonna kick this off? Tracy, Rita, Mark?
I think I already started to tell you about the closeout, you know?
Yeah, go right ahead, Rita.
Yeah, this is Rita, sorry. So we do have set deadlines for year end and they're pretty stern that, you know, that we close it. All new requisitions needed to be in today. All receiving needs to be done by the last day of school, which is the 17th. So until that all happens, we really can't, I really can't give you a figure on the closeout. As I said earlier, we are going to try to put the grievance, the second half of the grievance into this year's, into this year's payout. I'm not sure if you guys have any other questions on, do we have a Finance and Audit Committee next week? Or is there not one scheduled?
We haven't scheduled it at this point, Rita. We can, so we're waiting to see the result of this meeting, but so we, we can certainly schedule one.
So we'll schedule one for next week. You know, maybe you could have, we can have it.
I just liked it, yeah.
Earlier in the evening on Wednesday or something like that. And, you know, because at this point, the only thing that's on Wednesday is the Executive Committee and, and I don't really think we need to have an Executive Committee meeting. There's nothing pressing at all for us to discuss an Executive Committee next Wednesday. So, Mark, maybe we can talk after this meeting and see what makes sense for next week.
Sure, yeah, as I said, I was waiting primarily for Rita's schedule because I know she was, looks solid, but next Wednesday is fine. We'll talk that after the meeting.
Okay. Anything else on year-end stuff? We talked about this at our meeting last week, so I don't think there's much new since then. Okay, um, so the last two items before public comment are action items. The first one is possible action to approve a modification of the fund transfer process.
This is Rita.
Something anyone wants to explain or share with us?
Rita can explain.
Okay, Rita.
Okay, this is Rita. So I know we've had COVID expenses that are, that have been not budgeted. I can just give you an example of postage. We need to get report cards out. So I wanted to talk about the transfer process and, and whether or not we can modify it because we do not have another committee meeting. You know, we have, if we have one next week, we don't have enough time to approve these transfers that need to be done now as far as, you know, if, if a school doesn't have enough money for postage, my office can override the, the non-budget there and let the postage go through. That's just one example of the issue with the not enough funds in a certain line. So I just wanted to have a, is this a discussion item? I wanted to have a discussion about the transfer process because to Mark's point about pre-spending, we, we could pre-spend some of the funds as well, but we would have to make transfers because they're not in the right budget lines.
But I thought this was an action item, Rita. I'm like confused about, like, is there a proposal for action this evening? Or is this something we need to, like, polish a little more and take action on next week?
I guess my question is, if funds are needed in a budget line that doesn't have money, I wanted to express my concern that we are gonna have to override. We cannot do transfers in every single school and every single line by next Wednesday. I couldn't even write them all up. So I want to get permission to override those accounts. And this, this has happened in the past, which my staff just overrided it because the director has said, yes, override this account, doesn't have enough funds, but we have to purchase it. Facilities, if they need to purchase shields, you know, we override the account because it doesn't have enough budget. So that's basically what I'm asking for permission and action to do. Does that make sense?
Can I make a motion?
Yes, Tracy, I saw you getting ready. Go right ahead.
I make a motion to suspend the budget transfer policy. I don't have the number because I wasn't anticipating this, I'm sorry. Suspend the budget transfer policy during this pandemic. Notification, well, and encouraging and requiring, requiring, not encouraging, requiring notification of the Board next planned, scheduled Board of Finance meeting. So like, the next week will be a special meeting. The week after that, or July, or whatever, you'll have to notify us of where the, the transfers were for a period of time ending July 30th or 31st, 2020. It was a temporary suspension of our policy to allow Rita to make sure postcards get delivered and face shields get bought and whatever else we need to do before the end of this budget.
Motion was made by Tracy, seconded by Ilda, did I see?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that what you were looking for, Rita?
Yes, thank you, Tracy.
Do you have that, Janet? Okay.
I'm all set, thank you.
So, open it up for discussion, any discussion? Mark is Chair of the Finance and Audit Committee. Do you feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, there was a particular amount that she was looking for, but I'm comfortable with Rita and, and Dr. Youngberg keeping an eye on those transfers for us. So I'm, I'm comfortable going ahead with that permission. We're gonna be talking again next Wednesday, so.
Yeah.
That's why I put an end date to it, so it doesn't go on forever, but acknowledges that we're in kind of an unprecedented time.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote on this then. Thank you, Janet. I'm gonna hand it over to you to take the vote.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Ms. Dunnick. Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Ms. Haney. Ms. Haney?
Aye.
Ms. Lambert?
Aye.
Ms. Ray?
Aye.
Ms. Eid?
Aye. Motion passes. I don't think we have to take action on school closeout then tonight. There's nothing really to take action on for this year. I mean, at this point, you know, maybe, maybe at one of our next meetings. Before we go to public comment, I know, you know, we're, this is so hard in these meetings because I've seen the questions flying back and forth. But I know people are really nervous and asking some questions about what the process would be with layoffs and, and would that take into account? How do we take into account if we're having some, like, people leaving or retiring? And so I just want to give Dr. Youngberg just a minute or two, or a couple of minutes if you need it, to try to, like, let people know who are listening to this what they can expect as next steps once we take action.
So we're, well, I know, Stephanie, do you want to speak to the, the steps that HR is already starting?
So the way that the process will work is per the contract, we have to first send out salary notices. And then once you all make the decision on how we will do with the cuts, then we will notify people based on what the contract says or who would actually be the people that are affected. If people are affected, because if you say that we have to do incentives, if people are laid off, if people, I mean, sorry, incentives, if people decide that they retire and things like that. So if there's no one here and the positions are vacant, then it could possibly mean that it's less people that are laid off and some people who would be at the bottom may not even go anywhere. So it's hard to say. There may be 20 positions that leave the district, but it won't be 20 people that are affected because people will leave on their own. So it's, it's not, it's, it's not so cut and dry. But the process is you will receive salary notices. And I know that in the past has been emailed or sent or whatever, but you'll receive an email either tomorrow or Friday with a video that will tell you how we will send that out. Because of COVID, we're moving through the frontline system for you to do it that way, where you will set up your account and you'll receive it in the email so that you will have confirmation that we received it, that you, we will have confirmation you received it, and you will have confirmation that we received it back, so that we will have everybody's salary notification. But again, you will receive that email tomorrow because it's gonna be in a tiered process that everyone will receive it. But again, you, it's not a cut and dry system where every, where you will know immediately who will go because there's all these different layers to what's happening right now.
So like Stephanie said, everyone's gonna get their salary notices. That's gonna be happening relatively soon. And then once we get the okay of where the cuts are coming from, then we go through the seniority list and work on who's still here, who's next in line, which positions are available. It's a whole process. So the sooner we make the decision, the faster we can start that process.
And it's actually good that they're waiting the week because you never know what can happen in a week. Because people who are listening right now, right? Some people who may have a different opportunity or who have been saying that maybe I will go, they may go. Or who have been contemplating. may, may take that offer that they already have, right? And then by the time next week comes, the board may not even have a decision to make.
The board will have a decision to make.
I mean, I'm, I'm talking about, they may not have a decision to make on the cut because someone, someone may have, so the decision might be different.
Right. I, I just don't, I really just don't think we should, like, keep playing...
I'm saying, if, what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is that it's not that you won't have a decision to make, but someone may have already said they're going, so, so it's not that you won't have the decision to make.
Right, I think...
The person may have already gone, so I, it's...
Stephanie, I think you made, I think you made the point already, and I think we should leave it at that, that, you know, the positions that are put out here
Right.
Not be the positions in the end, depending on a whole chain of other things that happen.
Right.
I know it's very
Disheartening, yeah.
Right now. And I know people want us to make a decision fast. I don't think waiting another week and, and thinking a little bit more about this and seeing if there's something else we can, we can do is, is, is something, I think the board feels pretty strongly that we need that time. We thought, we saw this, these, these, we saw the slideshow for the first time this afternoon. And some of us probably didn't even get a chance to read it before it was presented to us tonight because we were working or whatever. So please understand, we're not trying to drag our feet, but we, we do need to be responsible about this. So I'm going to open it up to public comment. Is there anybody who wants to speak during public comment? Just take yourself off mute and say your name. Kathy, you want to speak?
Hi. Oh, there's two Cathys. The other one can go first. I'll wait.
Go ahead, Kath, Kathy Davis. Go ahead.
Hey, so, um, thank you so much. I wrote down notes so that I could stick to it and it'll be as brief as possible. First of all, I was fortunate enough to get Dr. Youngberg's presentation during the 2:00 hour. That said, it was a lot for me to process, but obviously, it's a lot for all of us to process. So, Dr. Youngberg, thank you so much for being forthcoming with everything, for being an open book, and for, you're doing such a wonderful job. We do appreciate you. Meanwhile, while I go through a couple of examples that I noticed on this presentation, I want you to just reflect on this. You don't have to react to it. But just know, because I work with all of these people, these are the things that kind of caught my attention. Number one, if you remember Slide 9, where there was information about Paris Tutor Support Staff. And although the numbers may look appropriate written on paper, when you say that you think we're, there may be too many of those people on staff or the number of students and all that, I know that this doesn't always align, that the students need support, and it's in our name, WFVP, we're the support staff, and we support the teachers and all that. Number two, if you look at Slide 12 and look at the TESOL positions specifically for Barrows, I'm not sure if you're all aware of this, but in 2019 to 2020, there were 71 students that were serviced along with these TESOL teachers going to meetings and collaborating with teachers on the staff. And I'm not sure how one person at Barrows would be able to service and to explicitly teach these students, these ELL students. Okay, in Slide 13, for the security, I echo the comments that were made earlier. Absolutely. Security is essential because that feeling of a safe learning environment, it's, it's so important. So you shouldn't have to put a price on it. Okay. Listening to the Board of Ed members tonight, and I've seen you a couple of times in the past through video conferences, and I had visited just this year during the school year, I want you to know that I can tell that you all care, and I appreciate your consideration. I, and also, just so you all know, thank goodness for the social, emotional day that we have scheduled for tomorrow. I think we're all going to need that. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else? Kathleen?
Hi, Kathleen Brillen. I'm the art teacher over at Windham Middle School. I'm just here, I, first of all, I want to thank you. I think in all my years of education, it's refreshing that you took the time to find savings first before going straight to cutting staff, which has been my experience over the years. So thank you for that. And I know it was not easy to do, and I know you worked really hard at it. I did want to voice my concern over the cut of a security guard at the middle school. And I'm saying this after being there for nine years. I've seen a little bit of the good, a little bit of the ugly. You know what I mean? The good, bad, and the ugly. We have the highest student population in the district, and the extra security guard that, one for each grade level, was hard enough. And to cut that down to two, along with our Chrysalis program and the Camino Alto being at our school as well, it's, it's, it's going to be tough with two. So I know it was a tough decision, and I know I'm not sure there's much we can do about it, but I just wanted to voice my concern about that. Thank you. And thanks for all your hard work, guys. You guys have been doing awesome. Thank you for supporting us.
Anybody else want to speak?
This is Nicole Bay. I'd like to speak.
Go right ahead, Nicole.
Hi, I would just like to say that, first of all, as devastated as I am with the decision made by the Board of Finance, I have huge faith in our leadership, both in the Board of Education and at Central Office. And that's not, not something that I've been able to say for the past few years. I'm devastated that we have to lose anybody as we adjust for this budget to make this work for our kids. But I feel very strongly that the people who are making the decisions really have the kids' best interests in mind. And I feel very supported by my colleagues and by the leadership that we're going to do what's best for our students going forward. I just wish that we had more to work with. But thank you so much for, for your hard work and for all of the details that you're paying attention to as you make these decisions for us to move forward.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment?
Hi, this is Nicole Campagnelli. I'm the social worker at North Windham. I just have a Claire, I would just like the five positions potentially brought under the Project Aware umbrella. I would just like some clarification of what that would look like. I know it's a five-year grant, and so what happens after the five years? And just any additional information I could get about that.
Well, we normally don't go back and forth answering questions during public comment, but it's duly noted, and perhaps when we, between now and next Wednesday, we can provide that information.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Anybody else? Okay, if nobody else has anything to say during public comment, we're going to close this meeting. And it looks like we'll be back again a week from now. And in the meantime, I want to encourage folks to get in touch if you have any thing you think we should be thinking about that didn't come up tonight. And Kathy Davis, if you want to put your, the points that you made to us in writing and send them to us tomorrow, that would be terrific, too. Oh, no, you're, you're doing social and emotional health tomorrow, so maybe you should wait and send it to us on Friday. Is there anybody who wants to say anything on the board before we close? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to...
I'm sorry, I just want to say thank you for all, for the wonderful turnout we had. And unfortunately, it wasn't for a good reason. We're sorry that this has to happen. You know, as a board, this is really hard to deal with. It's extremely hard that the Board of Finance has given us little crumbs and we have to make it work. You know, what does that say for our kids? How do we explain that, you know? And, and I know everybody wants to know what jobs are affected, but I think any job that's affected right now is devastating enough, especially during this time of the year, during this pandemic. So you guys hold your head up and thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Elda. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourned.
Mark moving adjourned. Do I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, for, for staying on so long. We appreciate the interest. Take care.
You, too. Bye.
Good night.
Night.
Night.